All right. We call the meeting to order. For all of the candidates, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. We come before you today with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to serve the people of Republic. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that affect our community. Grant us clarity, unity, and integrity in all that we do. Please help us to lead with compassion, humility, and a spirit of cooperation. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Make sure our mics are on for council, please. At this time, we'll go ahead and move on to citizens' participation. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak directly to council on matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Out of respect to everyone who is giving their time here this evening, we ask that you keep comments concise and focused and that we maintain mutual respect. Please know that we may not have all the answers immediately, but you are being heard, and we will do our best to address your concerns. Is there any constituents in the audience this evening that would like to speak during citizens' participation? Seeing that there is none, I'm going to close citizens' participation. Moving on to the consent agenda, I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items number one and two on the consent agenda. Seeing that there is none, I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 501. Moving on to board, commission, and committee schedules. Our Board of Adjustment meeting, September the 4th, 2025, is canceled. Our planning and zoning meeting, September the 8th, 2025, is canceled. Our city council meeting that was originally scheduled for September the 16th, 2025, will be moved to September the 9th, 2025. We will have another city council meeting on October the 7th, 2025, and a city council work session October the 14th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. Moving on to old business and tabled items. Item number three, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 25-26 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura, read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title VI, Business and Occupation, Chapter 635, Marijuana Facilities and Medical Facilities as defined in Missouri Constitution, Article 14, Sections 1 and 2, Section 635.080, Hours of Operation of Municipal Code of the City of Republic of Missouri.
Thank you, Laura. Does anyone on city council have any questions, comments, anything before moving forward? Mr. Harder.
What brought this up? What was the, is that, this is state or?
So, the original, I believe the original intent with this was, when it was originally passed, there was no intention for our one dispensary to work past a certain time, and they just simply wanted to extend their hours. When we had written that ordinance before, we had just kind of written it, from what I remember, on, based upon what the feedback from our one dispensary was, and since then, it's changed a little bit to where the hours of operation aren't necessarily, they're not the same in Republic as they are in other cities. So, our hours do not allow them to operate longer, from what I remember on.
So, this will put us more in tune to what the other cities are doing?
In time, in tune with Springfield. So, a lot of citizens have to go, due to this, I can't remember the times exactly. I want to say this one closed at like seven originally. Ms. Haynes could probably give a better overview than I will.
And I can provide a little bit more clarification. When we originally amended this section of the ordinance, we did have a closing time of 8:00 p.m. State statute actually allows dispensaries and related marijuana facilities to stay open until 10:00. We did receive a request, and we are amending those hours to align with the state.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Does that answer your question, Mr. Harder?
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Much better than me. Do we have any other additional questions, comments from council before moving forward?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neal.
Well, just to reiterate that, it puts us in line with what the state allows for, and since we passed a extra tax last year that would allow for additional tax revenue as kind of a second piece of that that's important.
Thank you very much.
Is there another question? Any questions, comments, council, before moving forward? Seeing that there are no additional questions, we will move on to final passage. I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 25-26, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion passes 600. Moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances. Item number four, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-27 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura, read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving a special use permit for Rep Mo First Store LLC to expand and construct a self-storage building at an existing self-storage facility on real property located at 715 North Denver Avenue.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Mr. Ruiz here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening. Patrick Ruiz, Senior Planner. Rep Mo First Store LLC has applied for a special use permit to construct a self-storage building on property located at 715 North Denver Avenue. If approved, the special use permit would allow the construction of a new 9,000-square-foot storage building, as shown on the development plan, at an existing and operational self-storage facility that is currently about 19,000 square feet in total building space. The existing self-storage facility has not received a special use permit in the past as storage facilities did not require those back at the time of construction, which was in 2002, the original development. The construction of a new storage building or any significant improvements to the site triggers the need for the special use permit. The city's special use ordinance gives discretionary authority to you as the city council to limit the placement and number of storage facilities in the city. Staff considers the proposed special use permit request to be generally consistent with the city's special use permit ordinance and can be adequately served by the city's transportation network and the city's municipal facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Mr. Harder.
So, on the planning, zoning, they had no one speaking against that?
Nope. Nobody spoke in opposition of it.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions from city council? Seeing that there are no additional questions, please remember to get with staff. This is a first read, so if you have any additional questions before the next meeting. Moving on to item number five, I have a public hearing of the city council regarding setting the 2025 property tax levies for the City of Republic of Missouri. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have anyone in the public that wants to speak on the 2025 property tax levy for the City of Republic? Seeing that there is none, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing. And on to item number six, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-28 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura, read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council setting the 2025 property tax levies for the City of Republic of Missouri.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Mr. Ford here to give us an overview.
Good evening. Bob Ford, Chief Financial Officer. Let me first say that we discussed the tax levy update in a bit more detail during our workshop this evening, so if you have any interest and you weren't able to attend that, that'll be online, that recorded presentation will be online so that you can go and gather additional information. But just to remind you, the City of Republic assesses taxes on real property but not on personal property. We assess a general operating tax that funds the general fund, Parks and Recreation that obviously funds the park fund, and the streetlights, which obviously fund the street fund. The city has the right to, and has, is allowed to increase or change its tax rates to accommodate inflationary growth, but the Hancock Amendment to the Constitution limits what that growth can look like. And it's limited by, the permitted growth rate is limited to the smaller of the actual increase in the assessed value, the Consumer Price Index, or 5%, which is ever is smaller. Just to kind of cut to the chase, what you're going, what I'll tell you is that the smaller number of those three options is 2.9% provided by the state, which is the CPI number that we're using for the year. So, that's the approved growth rate for the 25 calculation. We went through this rate calculation in depth in the last discussion. I won't go through it again. Suffice it to say, it gets us to our new, our new tax rates for each three of the different funds. So, given that, if you look at the tax levies for 2025, the proposed general operating tax levy is .3985 per $100 of assessed value, Parks and Rec at .1074 per $100 of assessed value, and Streets at .0613 per $100 of assessed value. You'll notice that if you compare those three summation of .5672 per $100 of assessed value, we're actually dropping the tax rate year over year. Once again, you may see, if you're in a situation where you have a lower tax rate, but your home has appreciated in value greater than the average, you may actually have an increase in your tax burden even though the rate has fallen. So, you have to look at your individual situation to know how it falls out. But suffice it to say, we're going from an assessed valuation in '24 for the City of Republic of $351 million up to $425 million in 2025. So, if we take that assessed value of 425, 431, 580, and apply the three separate tax rates against that assessed value, our expected operating earnings, our tax earnings for the general operating fund will be $1,695, for Parks and Rec, $456, and also for Streets would be $260,000. So, for a total of $2.4 million less than operating charge that the counties charged for collecting those taxes. So, our expected net property tax revenue for '25, which will cash flow in '26, we expect With that, staff respectfully request you approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Do we have any additional questions from city council? No questions from city council. But, Mr. Ford, we appreciate all your work and appreciate all your work from the workshop before, so it doesn't sound like there's a lot of questions now, but we had a lot of discussion about this prior to city council meeting, so. So, pursuant to 3.10F of the charter, staff is requesting the second reading of this ordinance during tonight's meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 25-28 to be held during tonight's meeting.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Moving on to item number seven, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-29 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving budget amendment number one to the budget for the fiscal year 2025.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Mr. Ford here to give us an overview on this one.
Good evening again. Once again, we went through the proposed amended budget for fiscal 2025 in pretty significant detail during the workshop, so if you have an interest and would like to learn more about what the amended budget looks like compared to the approved budget that was passed last year, feel free to view that discussion online. But, once again, quickly, budget highlights, the existing budget has a consolidated operating surplus of $3.5 million and a capital surplus of $1 million. We've identified sources and uses with regard to the capital budget. We're going to spend, we're going to use $55.1 million to, in the form of capital expenditures on various different projects, and we're going to fund that with cash grants, state taxes, and other sources. So, the consolidated net surplus for the existing budget is $4.5 million. And then, there's some discussion here about, we began the year with $60 million in debt outstanding, will end the year with $70 million of debt outstanding, recognizing that we're starting now to draw on the SRF debt in order to finish the last phases of our wastewater treatment plant and moving us into '26 to put that project online. So, the amended budget, which is our discussion tonight, on the operating side, the City of Republic's proposed amended budget reflects an improvement of $1.1 million in operating budget. So, specifically, revenues are up little over $1 million. Interest income is better than budget by about $210,000 due to a slower cash spend. We just keep the money, we're keeping the cash in the bank a little longer. We are also seeing an increase in the water fund on revenues of $562,000 and wastewater of $503,000. This is specifically due to the change in the rate structure that we put in place this year. When we built the budget last year, some of these things were unknown. We took our best guess at the time, but this gives you an idea that now we've integrated this new rate structure into the budget. Offsetting that improvement on the revenue side, Parks has had a difficult early season with the rush, and as a result of inclement weather and having to close the rush for more days than we would really have liked to have closed it, we've actually decreased their forecasted revenue for the year of $187,000, as well as they lost a renter. A North Point Church would rent their facility on Sundays for services, and that's a $41,000 loss. Expenses are down $82,000, so once again, revenues are up, expenses are down, two good things. Expenses down $82,000 primarily due to a decrease in personnel costs due to vacancies in current staffing. We do have an increase in legal expense due to outsourcing some of our legal activities. As you know, with the departure of Meghan, we've engaged Damon and his crew and some other folks to help us on the legal side. However, all of those incremental costs have been identified and approved by council during executive session. There's a bit of an increase in Project Genesis expenses because we're pulling activities that we would have spent in '26 into '25 because we're getting the work done quicker, and other operating expenses, kind of a smattering of things across all funds. On the capital side, we're spending $2.1 million more in this, in this capital budget than we did in the original budget that was approved. The primary driver here is the, is the new building, specifically the actual increase in the structure of $965,000, IT infrastructure of about $565,000, and furniture of $450,000. IT and some other things are driving this also. Parks and Rec, as we talked about in our last meeting, we were pushing forward on the J.R. Martin project, and we approved, you approved, an additional million dollars in funding from a debt perspective, so that we didn't want to issue the bids unless we knew we had funding in place. By having funding in place, we issued the bids. We expect to see bids back on the 5th of September. We'll open those bids, and then we'll move forward with the actual capex structure and contract negotiation, et cetera. But, net-net, the water fund, we're showing a net reduction in cash needs or capital needs of $16,000.5. Water fund is down 384. Streets is down 644. So, net-net, that, that we, we've approved, let me let you, here's my chart. So, we've talked about an increase in capex of $2.1 million, but the building itself has been approved in two separate resolutions passed by council. So, the incremental cost of $965 has already been approved. We're just memorializing that into this budget. The same with the administration building IT support or IT infrastructure, 564, 500, the SAN, J.R. Martin Park of $1 million, and some miscellaneous vehicles for parks. So, in fact, we're showing an increase in capex, but we've already approved $2.7 million of that $2.1 million increase. So, therefore, what we're asking council tonight is to say, it's okay to spend $578,000 less this year. Questions?
Doesn't look like we have any questions. Thanks again for another great job, Mr. Ford. So, before moving on, last chance, any questions, comments from city council?
Don't look at me.
Okay. Remember, this is a first read, so make sure that you give, Mr. Ford or staff, if you have any additional questions before the next meeting. Moving on to new business and second reading of ordinances, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 25-28 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council setting the 2025 property tax levies for the City of Republic of Missouri.
Thank you, Laura. Does city council have any questions, comments, discussion before moving forward? Seeing that there is none, we will move on to final passage. I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 25-28, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries 600. Moving on to other business and resolutions. 25-R-33, a resolution of the city council authorizing the negotiation and execution of services agreements furnishing packages for the new city hall building. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 25-R-33, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. We've got Mr. Ford to give us an overview.
Good evening again. Bob Ford, Chief Financial Officer. So, as we've discussed tonight in a couple of different settings, the new administration building that's going up next door, and we actually took a tour today, it is going to be a phenomenal building. Anyway, city council has approved $5,465,766 as the budget for the new building. This is the structure only that was approved in two separate resolutions, sort of two different tranches of money. In addition, $564,500 for IT infrastructure was approved in a prior resolution, 25-28. Tonight, we're requesting some additional funding not to exceed $350,000 for furniture for the new building. So, one, we issued an RFP with the help of BKD's design services team, which helped us dramatically in terms of pulling that RFP together, getting the information identified, really specking out what we needed for every office. It was, it was definitely a great help. We received four bid responses, which are currently being reviewed in detail by the BKD design team to ensure adherence to the RFP, but assuming that that is in fact correct, and we have no reason not to believe that all the RFPs in fact did that, quick turnaround to ensure that the furniture is on site and ready for installation in mid-November is one of the reasons why we're bringing this tonight. I'll remind you that in the amended budget we just talked about and had the first reading on, our placeholder in that budget is $450,000. Here, we're already showing $100,000 savings by asking the right to go and negotiate the final contracts not to exceed $350,000. The way BKD put this bid package together, they actually put it out for bid, and there's blocks of furniture that the bidders can bid on. So, we can actually go in and we can pick this bidder for Block A and another bidder for Block B. So, we picked a low bidder in every area. They're providing the same furniture and the same components, they just, for other reason, have different pricing for those components. So, we've gone through, Lisa and I have gone through with BKD, we've added up all of the various different low numbers that we could actually pick from, and the preliminary cost for furniture plus an allotment for artwork, we don't expect that we'll spend more than about $305,000. We're asking for $350,000 just to ensure that we have enough headroom to negotiate, finalize our contracts, but our expectation is there's more opportunity here. Staff is recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Mr. Harder.
So, the existing furniture that we were using is?
We, we have very little furniture left in the old building. It was a smattering of mismatched, old, in many cases, falling apart furniture, and when we made the move from the city, the old city hall and the old 204 office space here, we sold most of that furniture.
Thank you. Sold it.
That, like, here, take it. Here's a buck.
Yeah.
It really was not worth much.
So, none of that's left, so we're just?
None of that's left. So, the furniture, the furniture that we specked out will effectively match the furniture that's in the bill's building. So, we'll have a consistent look throughout both buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Harder. Do we have any additional questions from city council? Seeing that there is none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Moving on to item number 10, 25-R-34, a resolution of the city council authorizing execution of a services agreement with revised LLC for website redesign and support. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 25-R-34, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second, and we've got Mr. Jones, Mr. Parks here to give us an overview this evening.
Yes, I'm filling in, so.
Good evening, Chris Parks, Parks and Recreation Director.
So, this resolution is to enter an agreement with revised LLC for the redesign and ongoing support of the city website. Our goal with this project was to find a company that was modern, innovative, and user-friendly for both staff and the community on our, on our city website. We received 14 responses to the RFP, and after scoring the responses, we moved forward with an interview and demo of the top two candidates, and after those meetings, revised came out as the top candidate to move forward with, for these services. While our current website has served us well, similar to the ERP system, we felt it was time to look for a more innovative solution for the website. The proposal, cost proposal for them was $61,500 for the initial project and build, and then after that, it'll be $12,700 annually for the support services for that website hosting. Staff recommends approval, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Seeing that there are none, as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Motion carries 600. Moving on to reports from staff, Ms. Addington.
Yes. Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things, wanted to discuss the mud run, huge success. I was there on Saturday morning, I'm still amazed at how that comes together. It takes so many departments, Parks dedication staff, approximately 900 participants, so it was, it was a good time. The city administrator search, our goal is to bring a finalist to city council in September, so we're moving right along with that. Just to reemphasize in the beginning of the meeting with all the different date changes, our next council workshop will be 10/14. We have a busy October, so we have a meeting on the 7th, workshop on the 14th, and then another meeting the week following. And then, as Mayor you discussed, the 9/16 meeting was rescheduled. So September, again, we'll only have one meeting, and it'll be on 9/9. As most of you are aware, the additional funding that was allocated for the wastewater plant in the state budget was vetoed. However, we are still pursuing additional funding options. Bob, Karen, and I actually have a meeting tomorrow with DNR to discuss those possible options, so we will report back on, on any progress. And as Bob said, we were able to get a tour this morning of the new building, and we are extremely grateful to think where we started from and where we're going, it's amazing, so thank you. And then I just wanted to end with Labor Day. It actually marks, kind of everyone says, oh, Labor Day, it's the unofficial end of summer. However, as originally intended, it does celebrate the workforce and the labor movement. So since we have the best staff on the planet, I just wanted to tell everybody to have a great Labor Day weekend because they certainly earned it, and that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Addington. Do we have any reports from city council? Seeing that there are none, we're on to the mayor.
Yeah, it's been a busy couple of weeks, so I appreciate everyone for being here tonight, and I did want to express my gratitude. Looking back from the admin report from last August 5th, I did want to voice my appreciation for the 26,000 linear feet of paving and overlays completed this year. Seems like a, 26,000 sounds like a lot, and I know driving around town, I get to see some of that, I get a lot of good feedback on that, and so I'd just like to really voice my appreciation and the appreciation from the constituency as well. One other thing I'd like to touch on tonight, I know some of us have seen the news, maybe what had happened in Branson this weekend, when we're talking about laborers and people working, utility crews, there's always things that they're working through underground and infrastructure that it's not always obvious to the rest of us. And so there was a tragic accident this weekend. It just goes to show how quickly things can happen in those sorts of situations, and I just really, I appreciate all the hard work that our utility crews do with that, and the silver shovel that they get year after year is a true testament to the skill level and what it takes to go in there between those infrastructures that are supplying us, whether it's gas, electrical, a lot of dangerous stuff is in the ground that we don't necessarily know about, that we pass over every single day. So I'm very appreciative to our crew that, that does a great job, you know, navigating these challenges, and my heart and prayers go out to the community of Branson and those workers and those families. That's just a terrible thing, when you, you go to work and you don't expect that to happen, so our heart goes out to you. My next thing is a little bit of a question, is our yard waste open this weekend or is it the next weekend after? It's a holiday this weekend.
I have to get back to you.
Okay. I meant to ask that before, and I just had a blank here, so my apologies. So the only other thing I would like to say, thank you, Ms. Addington, for touching on the search for, for the next city administrator. Looking forward to having that hopefully to come soon, no guarantees yet, of course, but I appreciate staff and all the hard work that's gone into that. I appreciate Mr. Ford and all the staff work that went into the budget amendment and the property tax levy and all of that hard work, that even the furniture for city hall, it sounds like there's been a lot of stuff going on, so we appreciate everyone and their financial diligence in making sure that we're spending the taxpayers' money to the best of our ability and getting that best deal. So thank you for, for everything that we've gone through on the budgeting and for all the information you presented to council tonight. The Republic Racer Car Show is coming up Saturday, September the 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I've got it on my schedule, I hope I can go. I went last year, and that was a lot of fun. So if you really want to see something happen on Historic Main Street, some hot rods, I think one of the judges is here this evening that judged the cars last year, but no, but yeah.
I'm a Christmas parade guy.
But that was a Christmas parade. They all blend together. But if you want a good time on Historic Main Street, Saturday, September the 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., is the Republic Racer Car Show. So I hope everyone's enjoying the cooler weather. Please stay safe, have an enjoyable holiday weekend, especially now that we're moving on to fall. Ms. Haynes?
The yard race facility will be open on Friday, September 5th, 12:30 to 4:00, and then on Saturday, September 6th, 8:00 to 1:00.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So tonight, we do have an executive session, so I asked that our break be brief, and we'll move on into executive session. Tonight, we will be going into closed session under RSMO 610.021.1, pending or potential litigation, closed session, closed vote, closed record, and RSMO 610.021.2, real estate acquisition, closed session, closed vote, closed record. I now need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we're now going to take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.